I'd like to call it a order, the Monday, February 15th, meeting of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners. At six o'clock, we had a joint work session with the planning board. And at this time, I would like to ask Reverend Dan Bergy from New Life Church to lead us in invocation, and then after that, I'd ask everyone to stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you Chairman, may we pray? Father God, I thank you that you are Creator God, God of all things, tonight. And Father, in these moments, as we begin now, this open session after the work and planning session, Father, I pray that you would give wisdom, that you would give guidance and direction to our commissioners, to all who have a part tonight. Father, it's a special honor tonight to be able to pray along with President's Day today. And so, Lord God, I stand tonight in the name of Jesus, and I pray for our President, Lord God, I pray for his cabinet, I pray for his family, I pray for all of those that work for him and work with him. Father God, I pray that as we are a small extension of a larger government here tonight, that you would begin to show us the way to return to the foundations of this nation that it was built on. And so, I thank you for that opportunity. Lord, for our armed forces tonight, who faithfully work, who faithfully fight, who faithfully help protect our freedoms, Lord God, I thank you for that tonight. And Lord God, may we not forget the freedom that we have in a personal relationship with you. And so, I thank you for that tonight, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Will you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Bergy, I'd like to thank you again for coming out tonight and leading our invocation. Next is the approval of the agenda. We have two items to add to the agenda. Item 2A, after public comment, would be the resolution concerning the OLF Joint Land Use Study. And in the consent agenda, I'd like to add the agreement for a wastewater master plan between Currituck Utilities and Currituck County.
So, move this down.
Have a motion for approval. Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, light sign. All right. First thing we have is public comments. I see we have several people that want to comment on the OLF resolution. What I may do is call on you after we adopt the OLF resolution and let you make comments at that time. Other than that, we have Ashley Drexler, who has signed up. We'd ask you to come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ashley Drexler. I live at 371 North Spot Road in Powell's Point.
Yes ma'am.
I thank you for your time, first of all, and I'm appearing before you today to voice my concern for the proposed entry and exit way to the newly developed and open 4H center in Powell's Point. It is my understanding that there has been land purchased for the proposed entry to the facility, and as of the meeting I had earlier in January with the county manager and part of their planning committee, it was their intention to use this land as an entryway, once they removed the mobile homes that were there, and then to use Gabbard Lane as an exit, which is the corner that my house sits on. The use of this private road, I feel, would be detrimental to the upkeep and enjoyment of the landowners on and around the lane, that I bring up the question why the planning committee does not use the land that is already purchased as an exit as well. I've seen the developments or the plans that were laid before me on this, and I understand, you know, why they want it to be this way. But the pavement that is down, that is known as Gabbard Lane, was put down by a previous landowner privately to protect the integrity of the easement, to make it more accessible to the residents that live down that road, and to make travel safer. But it seems to me that the original easement agreement is being stretched to meet the needs of this new facility. The road is known throughout our community as being a private road, and it has also been asked to me, why is it being used as, well, right now, it's being used as an entrance and an exit, but why is it going to be used as an exit in the future when this other property has been purchased? I want to say that I'm not opposed to there being a 4H center. I think it's necessary for the residents in that part of Currituck to have this, not only as a way to attract business, but as a way to have quality family activities. But with that business and activity comes traffic, and Gabbard Lane is not equipped to handle, especially as a one-way. The paved portion of the road is not big enough for a horse trailer to go one-way while the rest of the residents go the other way. And so, it is my thought that it poses a danger and a threat for anyone who may happen to be traveling down Gabbard Lane at the same time that one of the events may be letting out.
That's time, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead and finish off.
Okay, I please ask you just to carefully consider the entrance and exit provisions and the proposed development for the already functioning 4H center, and I appreciate your time, and I have pictures and what I've just stated for the commissioners.
Ms. Keen. Mr. Chairman, is that road a private road, or is that not part of the county's purchase?
The county was indeed conveyed an easement for ingress, egress, and use to access its property that it purchased there on Gabbard Lane. So, it certainly is a legal and, a legal road for the county to utilize for its activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. I would like to mention, Mr. Rohr could not be here tonight. His wife is sick, and he could not be here. So, please keep them in your prayers. Item 2...
Can I ask back one question?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
On the Gabbard Lane, I remember that the, where it turns right there to the left in the picture she provided us, is only, when did it, 20 some feet wide? 26 or 27 feet wide?
I don't recall it, that may be right, after it makes a turn off, and starts heading toward the county property there.
But we also acquired the piece from there, too, Spot Road? Is that what you're saying?
We acquired, was known as a stone property, a little bit farther down Spot Road from the Gabbard Lane entrance.
Right, I'm talking about this piece right here, which is south of the stone property. But we acquired the road, not Gabbard Lane.
Gabbard Lane's the one we have the easement across.
Right, we have the easement. Is that 30 or 45 feet?
I think it's 45.
My recollection is where it turns, I'm glad she provided us that picture, because right where it turns, it's only about 25 to 26 feet.
Yep.
Which brings up the good point that she brought up, that it wouldn't be suitable for two-way traffic on that road.
I think the right-of-way is much wider than the paved area. At least, Mr. Woody was going to say, at least 45 feet.
The right-of-way, which in the picture you're looking at where it turns, where it turns to the left, that's where actually an access easement is, and that's a little over 20 feet in width. Gabbard Lane itself, where it connects to Spot Lane, is actually a right-of-way, and that's 45 feet in width.
Okay.
That's actually a public right-of-way. So, when you leave Spot Road and you enter Gabbard Lane, you're entering a public right-of-way, then you're taking that left onto an access easement, which is 20, a little over 20 feet in width. That's where we're at.
Thank you.
And to address the narrowness, the intent is to have a one-way flow in and out, into the stone property, through and out Gabbard Lane. I think that's what Mrs. Drexler was asking for us to reconsider, is have us come in and out of the stone property versus coming through this property here. But the intent right now is to have a one-way flow, in and out.
Is there any reason why we can't consider her request at this time?
You certainly can consider her request.
Ask Mr. Woody to include that.
Well, he can certainly bring us something forward to let us consider, because I think the master plan's got to come back to us anyways. So, that can be an option, as we consider it. Yes, sir. Any other commissioners have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I do think that's the reason we bought this stone property, to use it as a drive in and out. I think that was the original purpose of buying that property, to be truthful.
We can get staff to bring us a...
Yes, sir.
A look at it, and see if that's appropriate. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this past, I believe it was last week, or that article in the paper, where it appears that North Carolina Department of Public Instruction is looking at limiting the amount of American history that's called in our high schools, starting at 1871, I think, and moving forward. I know our member, our school board has expressed their concern about it, and Bassnight's done the same thing, and I'd like for this board to also consider passing a resolution, that this is not the right thing to do, because we need to teach the Constitution and civics to our students, so they can have a good understanding of how our governmental system is designed to work, and how it is supposed to work. And I would like that form of a motion, if we adopt a resolution like that.
I have a motion, and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, light sign. Any other commissioner have anything? Is there anyone in the audience that did not get to speak to an issue that you would like to speak to tonight? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and move to item 2A. I'm not going to read this entire resolution, because it would take quite a, quite a bit of time, but the purpose of this resolution tonight is, it's been brought to the Board of Commissioners' attention, that there was a joint land use study that was done with the city of Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, Norfolk, and the United States Navy. And as part of their land use study, one of their findings is, is I'm going to read part of it out of here, "Two of the recommendations found in the executive summary of the final Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Study is pursuit of the study goal, including the pursuit of an additional outline landing field in North Carolina to allow additional flight training in undeveloped areas outside Hampton Roads. And number two, to implement or continue all flight ops modifications feasible to reduce air ops to minimal feasible to support mission over Hampton Roads' developed areas." So, what I've just read there is, I'm reading another section here, it says, "The executive summary of the final Hampton Roads Joint Land Use states that the recommendations found therein would result in the decreased level of community impacts from noise." But what you need to know is, it's not our community impact reduction in noise that they're talking about, they're talking about sending the noise to North Carolina. Now, this was a joint study that was done with the Navy, who is playing the honest broker in this, that we're doing a study. Well, we've got a copy of a study, they're doing another study to go with some of the other studies, because they haven't quite got the right outcome of their studies yet. But this was a study they did jointly with Virginia municipalities, and basically saying North Carolina is where the OLF is going to go. We've got it right here on record. So, we have a resolution tonight that, I read a portion of it, and that's the main part, but another thing is, is we were not consulted. None of the jurisdictions in North Carolina were consulted, as we were made a part of this recommendation. And also, the state of Virginia adopted this as part of the land use plan for their municipalities. So, we have a resolution tonight that basically is saying that we think that this is egregious, that they would include us as their noise mitigation for the problem that they created. And with that, we need to adopt this resolution, and then we've got some discussion. I think Mr. McCray is going to talk a little bit about it, and we have a few people signed up, so I'd like to adopt the resolution and then open it up. There, I have a motion for approval, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, light sign. Now, we would like to provide copies of this for the press, or for anyone else that would like a copy of this, the clerk will make sure that copies are available. I don't know if we have press here tonight. I saw Ms. Linda Kane earlier, she's in the back, but I don't see anyone from Virginia Pilot or the Daily Advance here tonight, but we'll make sure they get a copy of it. But, Mr. McCray, could you briefly...
You highlight, is that's what I would have, would have mentioned, as you adopted the resolution, the point being that back in 2004, the Navy instituted this joint land use study with the municipalities across the border from us, in Tidewater, Virginia, without the inclusion of Camden and Currituck, or any other North Carolina county or municipality. April 2005, that study was adopted by the, by the Virginia municipalities, and then in 2006, the Virginia General Assembly actually adopted a law which put into effect this land use plan for those communities to then follow. And then, I guess, the most important aspect, important aspect is, as the chairman just noted, that one of the goals of the joint land use study and plan is to put an OLF in North Carolina to rid their communities of the noise impact of the operation of the jets they're taking off and practicing. So, that's basically what, what they've done, and then your resolution, of course, is noting your objection to that, particularly without the inclusion of North Carolina and its communities being involved in the study and having some input in it. And second, they requested that our state and federal representatives take what steps might be necessary to cause repeal of such an action by the Virginia communities and the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Yeah, one of the goals in this, in this study, it says, "The goal of these tools is to create a uniform planning policy environment around the installations to help prevent future growth incompatible to continuing military operations." So, "The tools seek a balance among these diverse interests by stressing the feasibility of implementation." And this is the one that really stands out to me, "The ability to sustain the economic health of the region and protect individual property rights." Well, they trample all over our property rights down here, if they come and take the property. And as I'm sure a lot of you have read in the Virginia Pilot, I think it was probably maybe two weeks ago, there was a letter to the editor, I believe it was, where a gentleman said they bought his house because of the OLF, and he moved down to North Carolina. And I think the city paid, I don't know, somewhere around $300,000 maybe for the property. Then they turned around and sold it to a developer for, I think, $30,000 or $40,000, and he's gone in there and rebuilt buildings on the property that they were supposed to be holding in abatement to meet the qualifications of their agreement with the Navy about the land use surrounding the airstrip. So, it's, it's, in my mind, this is a pretty big deal. I don't know, we need to make sure that we send this, a copy of this, to Representative Owens, Senator Mark Bassnight, Governor Purdue, Congressman Jones, Senator Burr, and Senator Hagan. And with that...
And Attorney General Cooper.
Yeah, and Attorney General Roy Cooper, because he's the one that would maybe have to defend some of this. So, with that, any other comments? Yes, and we've been trying to plan a joint meeting between Pasco Tank, Camden, and Currituck to discuss the OLF, but we're also inviting the local school boards, along with the Lisbon City City Council, so that everybody gets the same presentation. But it's important that our school boards understand the impacts that this noise is going to have on the learning environment, and it's not just Currituck and Camden, it's going to be tremendous on Pasco Tank as well, because they're at one of those windows at the end of the flight pattern, and it's going to be tremendous on them as well. So, with that, any comments, or...
Well, yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm glad we brought up the resolution and so quickly passed it. The public needs to know that we are really now in a David and Goliath fight. I personally am totally disillusioned with the city of Virginia Beach's leaders, where I originally came from, and with the city of Chesapeake's leaders, for not consulting and not involving us in this, to telling us, just as the chairman very aptly put it, that they can't handle the noise, and they've got people moving out, they're destroying their kids' brains by flying those jets over their elementary schools, so they're going to move them down here and do it to us. That's totally unacceptable. We've had a great report. This board gave the city of Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Portsmouth, and all the rest of them, $200,000 to help support the Nightingale flights, and not one of those cities put in a penny. And then they turn around and do this to us, and I'm just appalled at their actions.
I'm in full agreement. With that, we have several people that have, that have asked to speak tonight. I think that's what the majority of our audience is here for, and I think they've wisely chosen several people to come and speak. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Linda Knox, and ask you to please state your name and address for the record, and Mr. McCray is going to try to hold us to three minutes as best as we can.
Okay. My name is Linda Knox, I live at 148 Providence Drive in Wildwood Acres. First of all, I'd like to thank all of my commissioners for their support of opposing this very important issue. The Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Agreement is a complete violation of our rights, and to think it was made into law and endorsed by the United States Government is wrong. I understand that the Department of Defense Office of Economic Adjustment was instrumental in the Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Agreement. I would ask this commission to formally contact the Office of Economic Adjustment and ask the Office of Economic Adjustment why the North Carolina localities were left out of this process. It doesn't matter when the agreement took place, last year or five years ago, I can assure you that not one locality of North Carolina was part of this agreement. This is shameful, and we should not be a part of a land use plan for another locality in another state without our permission. Thank you.
Thank you. Without objection, Ms. Keen, I would like for that letter to go forward, asking them why we weren't consulted. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Juanita Kraus?
Good evening, my name is Juanita Kraus, I reside at 236 Summit Farms Trail in Mooyak. First of all, Chairman O'Neill, commissioners, I want to thank you so much for your support in protecting your citizens and supporting your citizens. I support this resolution in opposing our inclusion into a land use plan outside of our jurisdiction. The OLF is a tool within the Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Policy to mitigate land use problems in the other localities up there. Because the Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Study was codified in the General Assembly and in the Commonwealth of Virginia, it is threatening to our sovereignty. I'm troubled by the fact that we were not made aware of this during our scoping hearings two years ago, for the outline landing field, when we had scoping meetings. This is a very important, because they talk about, they talk about reducing flight operations to a minimum feasible at this facility. So, it really does impact our situation, because we're looking at their numbers of 63% capacity, and it certainly makes, it plays into where we are right now, and here we are today. I do not know of any localities in North Carolina who were part of this agreement. I'm going to ask you tonight to please make sure we follow through, to remove ourselves from this document that is located in Virginia. I would really appreciate that, and again, I thank you so much for all that you're doing. Also, I understand that a letter was sent to the Honorable Ramis Secretary of the Navy, Raymond Mavis, and that was sent back, it looks like, on November 15th, and I'm just curious, have you ever had a response from the letter that the three joint, the three joint localities here have sent? No, no response?
We have not.
We have not received a response.
Okay, okay, okay. I guess we'll just have to look forward to that response, I would imagine he is quite busy, but that, it's from November, right?
Four months ago.
Okay, okay. Well, I do, I do appreciate all that you're doing, and I'm hoping maybe we can look into this, and maybe our federal representatives might be able to help us with this. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And on a, on a note with that, I see no reason why we can't send a letter to Congressman Jones, Senator Burr, and Hagan, letting them know we have not received a response to that letter. Could they please help us with that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll see Senator Hagan as part of the Alamo Commission. If he give me the letter, I'll put it in her hand.
Put the letter in Mr. Nelmes's hands, please.
I'll give you that letter. How about if I put that in your hand?
We'll put it in your hand right now.
Thank you.
Just pray that it doesn't snow.
When is that?
I think it's Friday.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Diane and Mike Jensen?
If you have anything further to add than your sense.
Okay, thank you. Jim Dempsey?
Please give your name and address for the record, sir. Hi, my name is Jim Dempsey, I live at 210 Marinus Way in the Riverside section. I'm not a very polite speaker, so I kind of apologize if I'm going to stumble over all this, but firstly, I wanted to say I do appreciate your support of this resolution, and I came to speak today basically because, you know, I'm mad as heck over all this stuff. I'm a Navy veteran, I didn't serve my country to allow this kind of backhanded dealing between cities of Hampton Roads and Navy to go unchallenged. Frankly, I cannot believe the gall and audacity of a neighboring state to propose a de facto land grab in North Carolina without including us in the, in the process. What they're attempting to do is stack the deck, cram this thing down our throats, it's an unwanted, unsolicited, and uninvited OLF that we don't want in our neighborhood, and the reason it's being sent here is to mitigate problems that Virginia Beach has created for himself by greedy developers. And I do appreciate your support in all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And you did an excellent job.
Yeah, thank you.
Troy Brethwaite?
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners, I really wanted to take a second and thank you all, on behalf of the Citizens Group and the county at large, for all of your support on this issue, it's been fantastic. I think for all the folks at home, the citizens, if you see any of these folks, your commissioners out and about in the community, please take a second to walk up and thank them, because their support has been tremendous. I'd also like to thank Senator Bassnight, Representative Owens, Senator Burr, we're working with Senator Hagan's folks right now, we're just trying to, just... working with Senator Hagan's folks right now, we're just trying to, just now starting to get a relationship with them, and hopefully they'll, they'll be able to support us as well, as much as you folks have. I, I think what this, this whole thing does is it shows us, really, what this is about. It's not about patriotism, who's more patriotic than somebody else or any of that, we know that, that's not what the, what this is about at all. What this is about, this is a land use issue, always has been. This Hampton Roads Joint Land Use Plan has been in the works since pre-2000. This is not a new issue. This is something that's been going on for more than 10 years. They do have a problem up there, they absolutely have a problem up there. But anytime you have a locality or localities get together with the Navy and do a joint land use study, any solutions that they come up with should be found within their own jurisdictions, because they're the ones at the table, they're the ones making recommendations, they are the ones coming to the solutions. Any solution that involves a locality outside of those three localities is wrong, and I'm very thankful that, that my commissioners here before me today have seen fit not to stand for that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Troy. I do want to personally thank you, and I'll call it your staff, because I don't want people to think that, that we've set up here and come up with all this information. You guys out there in the public have been instrumental and worked very hard to uncover the worms under the rocks, and I'm very appreciative of what you've done, and, and makes me proud to be a part of a county where the community pulls together and, and comes and works jointly on this, so I do want to thank you all for that. Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to send a letter to Representative Owens and Senator Bassnight as well, and ask them to find the Virginia Beach and Chesapeake delegation, asking a proper reply as to why this did take place, and to further our thoughts and efforts against what they have done?
Without objection, I don't see any reason why the clerk can't prepare that letter as well. You didn't plan on taking tomorrow off, did you?
I agree with Mr. Etheridge, I think we need to do that ourselves.
Well, there was some talk about that at one time, and there was some people who thought that might not be the best way to move on that.
Well, that's the level of government, the level of government. They should send it to the General Assembly.
Okay, I follow what you're saying, yeah, okay.
Yeah, our letter should go to Chesapeake, Virginia Beach, and whatever. Their letter inquiry should go to the General Assembly in Virginia. Yeah, I agree with that.
I was just taking a step out of it and sending it to our congressional senate delegation to take a step out of the process.
Like I said, don't take tomorrow off.
But, I mean, that's fine with me.
Ms. Taylor?
Just wanted to piggyback on you, I want to take, thank Juanita Kraus and Troy Brethwaite and everybody else, they started this, what, three years ago now? We told everybody when we started it was a sprint, it was a marathon, and that marathon continues. I appreciate your time, your effort, these people are not paid for the hundreds of hours that they have put into this, and we really do appreciate it, because if we win, we couldn't have done it without you, and we couldn't have been where we are today without your help, and we really appreciate it. But once again, remind everybody, stay awake.
Stay awake.
And keep moving forward.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, let me just say, when we went, we were up in Washington two weeks ago, and we've made several trips, several of us commissioners have concerned this OLF. But I remember when we went in Congressman Jones's office last week, week before last, that's one thing he specifically said, that without the private, without the input from this private group that's sitting right up there tonight, and one that has spoke, that they would have never been where they are, they would have never known about some things that they know about today. So y'all, y'all are really to be commended for what you have done concerning this matter.
Absolutely. Anyone else? With that, I do thank y'all, all of you that came out tonight, and, and the support that you're, you're providing in this very worthwhile effort, and we'll continue with the marathon, as Ms. Taylor calls it. With that, we'll move on to Item 3, Audit Presentation. Through June 30th, 2009, we have Chris Burton to present the audit for that period. And we have Ms. Sandra Hill, our Finance Officer.
Good evening.
Our award-winning Finance Officer.
I'm Sandra Hill, and I'm the Finance Officer. Okay, I'm learning how to hit these buttons, so we'll see how that works. Tonight, you should have in front of you the financial statements, and that's what we have Mr. Burton here with Peter Perry and Crone to go over with you. He's from New Bern, and he's the one that, that was the lead on auditing our financial statements. On page 13, you will find the Independent Auditor's Report that gives us an unqualified opinion on, on these statements. And this year, some of the audit highlights that I'll go over is the fund balance of the General Fund decreased by a little over $14 million. This was primarily due to $6 million for the Shawboro School, and $4.8 million, that was not really anything different, except for we're reporting the occupancy tax fund in a separate fund, so the money didn't go anywhere, it's just, it's just in a different place in the report. And then we did have a revenue shortfall from revenues last year. This report is, is fund balances and that you saw during your retreat. This ties into page 22 for the unreserved fund balances in the general, in the governmental funds, and page 23 for the net assets in the enterprise funds. Our, our county bond ratings have remained unchanged this year, and our Moody's Investor Service rating is an A II, and our Standard and Poor's rating is an A plus. The capital projects that we did this year were, the Cooperative Extension Facility was completed, the Shawboro, Shawboro Elementary School was completed, the Knott's Island Fire Station, and the Carova Beach Park. Projects that we still had in process were the Outer Banks Greenway and Bike Path, and the Muyak Library, and the Recreation Facility. The Muyak Sewer Project had not begun yet at, at June 30th, but that is also going on now. And if anyone would like to see the financial statements, you can go to the county website, and they're under the Finance section. But now I'm going to turn this over to Chris Burton, and he can go over the rest of the audit for you.
Misses, how are y'all tonight? She gave you a good recap. What I like to do is go through the management's discussion and analysis, which gives you where you were prior year, where you are this year. And I'm just going to go over the highlights.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 15. The assets of Currituck County exceeded the liabilities at the close of the year by $1,577,955,000. The net assets increased by $5,304,000, 75% of that was because of governmental activities. At the close of the fiscal year, the governmental funds had fund balances of $55,269,000, a decrease of $6 million in comparison with the prior year, and approximately 83% of this is available for spending at the government's discretion. At the end of the current fiscal year, unreserved fund balance for the General Fund was $8,800,000, or 20% of General Fund expenditures. The Local Government Commission likes that percent to be at least 8%, so y'all are well within the guidelines there. Let's flip over to page 19. Here's a recap of the net assets for the county. In the governmental funds, you see we had total assets of $1,041 million, net assets of $122 million. Business-type activities, you had total assets of $63 million, and net assets of $35 million. Business-type activities is your water and sewer projects. Page 20, and I'm not going to read through all of these, is several aspects of the operations that influence total unrestricted governmental net assets, of which Sandra just really went through a few minutes ago. But this is a detailed listing for y'all to read, and it'll help you understand things a lot better, I think. Page 21 is the changes in the net assets. In essence, this is an income statement for both governmental funds and business-type As you can see, the net assets in the governmental activities went up $3,900,000, and in the business-type activities, a million three. Page 25 is a statement of your capital assets, of which, that's a major part of y'all's assets. At the top of the page, you have major capital transactions during the year. Then we have by type, in the governmental activities and the business-type activities, these amounts are net of depreciation. As you can see, in the governmental activities, you have net fixed assets of $81 million, and net in the business-type activities of $47 million. Okay, the other thing that I would like to point out is on page 125, excuse me, 126, is your property taxes. Your collection rate for the year ended June 30, '09 was 96.25. That's fantastic. That's above other units I do by far. However, it did come down a little bit from the prior year, and I think that's just a sign of the economic times we're in right now. The last item I'd like to point out is the schedule of federal and state financial assistance.
Which page is that again?
And that is on page 151, 52, and 153. We have total federal assistance of $15,933,000, total state assistance of $4,800,000. Now, a lot of folks don't realize how much the feds and the state do, you know, pump into the economy. A lot of that's Medicaid money, which the county doesn't actually get, but is passed on to the citizens. As for things wrong, really nothing. We have a couple of little items in a management letter, which I'm not even going to go into, in the Social Services Department, whether it's where, you know, folks forgot to dot I's and cross T's and that kind of thing, just little minor things. But it's always a pleasure coming up here, very clean operations, got good internal controls, and I'd like to convince Sandra on that, they, they really work hard, and with Dan's help too, making sure, you know, there's checkpoints behind everything that's done around here, which is very important in an internal control system.
So, in your opinion, Currituck County is very sound financially?
Yes, sir.
And it's being run by our staff properly?
Absolutely, yes, sir. Anything else?
Anyone have questions?
Could you elaborate on the statement that investment earnings are down by $1.6 million, which you say is due to the depressed investment earnings compounded with the outlays on construction projects? How do you understand how the construction projects are related to that?
Well, at the beginning of the year, you had a lot of bond money on hand that you would receive. If you spend it down, you're not going to earn any more money, you know, as you spend that bond money.
It's not the rate, it's just that we use the funds.
Well, it's a combination. Yes, 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 sir. I mean, now, boy, you can't, you can't get 1% now.
No.
It's sort of sad out there.
You've got to pay them to keep it.
That's just about, you just put it in your mattress, and you feel a lot better off.
We'd be better off to keep it ourselves.
Anyone else have questions? I would like to make a comment. Ms. Scanlon, do you have some?
I just want to make a comment. One of the, I guess, one of the many quirky things about auditing in the accounting profession is, you saw the Finance Director started off saying that we had an unqualified opinion. In accounting jargon, that's actually good, that, that's the best you can get. Most of the times, if something's unqualified, it generally is not a good thing, but in accounting jargon, that is, that is actually a good thing, it's the highest opinion that you can get in an audit, so did want to make sure that the board was...
Yeah, I meant to say that. It's, it's synonymous with clean. Unqualified equals clean.
I just, I want to commend the commissioners, the current board, the previous board, and the boards that have served in the past. There's been several times the county's been criticized for building a reserve fund, that it was seen as being excessive by some, because we were always thinking, when is that hurricane going to come, that storm? Well, the, the storm that we're seeing now is not a hurricane, it's a financial storm, and because the previous boards and the current board setting aside, and staff setting aside those reserves, Currituck County is in much better financial shape than a lot, or most of the counties in North Carolina. And I just want to commend the previous board and, and previous boards for, and staff for having that foresight and vision. Of course, it wasn't a hurricane, but it was a financial storm, so we're in a, you know, yeah, we're in a much better position than most of the counties in the state.
I just wanted to call up on something you've said, in your experience, where do we rate in terms of our financial position compared to other counties?
Oh, you're, you're top of the class.
Mr. Etheridge, I'll tell you, the other nine counties in the Alamo region would trade places with us tomorrow.
In a heartbeat.
In a heartbeat.
Yeah.
I've been told the other nine are in North Carolina.
Yes, sir.
Just, just from my first year of experience sitting here, Mr. Scanlon and his staff deserves the utmost credit in this world. They are very good stewards of our county's money. They let us know when we get a little too far out to the left, and a little too far out to the right, so I want to thank you for that, and please pass that along to everyone.
Thank you, sure will.
Yeah, the manager is tight.
Which, which in accounting terminology is another good word.
That's a good thing, that's a good thing. Well, Mr. Burton, I want to thank you for coming tonight and making that presentation, and copies of this are available at our libraries...
And our website.
And our website, and here at the courthouse, if someone would like a copy to view. Thank you very much. Item 4, Public Hearing in Action on PBO 9-37, Corolla Wild Horse Fund, Request for a Special Use Permit for an Outdoor Tour Operator Located at 1126 Schoolhouse Lane, PAXMAP 114, Parcel 53 Papa Branch Township. Mr. Woody. All right, who is here for that? For the applicant? Now, this is requiring sworn testimony, so anybody that wants to speak in favor of the application or in opposition to the application needs to come forward now and be sworn. Hearing none, ask you to place your left hand on the bim and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This request is for a special use permit, and it falls under our Outdoor Tour Operator Ordinance that was recently put in place. This specific request is for the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, which is located at the corner of Corolla Village Road and Schoolhouse Lane in Corolla Village, the property there is owned general business, and the horse fund actually is using this, or is planning to provide tours or, or visits to the off-road area to look at the houses, or to the horses. And actually, what makes their, their request interesting is the, the tours given by the herd manager, and is part of their fundraising efforts for the nonprofit. But what the board did is, in September of 2009, and that, that's following a summer, where an advisory group committee was put together to kind of discuss the impacts specifically that vehicular tours may or may not have on the off-road area and the wild horses up there, that being an obvious tourist... wild horses up there, that being an obvious tourist role. An advisory committee was put together to discuss that and look at the, the impacts of that. Uh, one thing we did as a committee is we recommended some, uh, conditions of operation that the tour companies would, would voluntarily undertake. Uh, most of those companies did undertake those conditions, um, and at the end of the, at the end of the summer, or after, you know, seeing how that went, um, the committee's recommendation was to require special use permits for all the tour operators, the vehicular tour operators in the off-road area. And the board of commissioners affirmed that, and also requested that we require every tour operator, vehicular tour operator that provides horse tours, to come back to the board of commissioners and receive a special use permit. Principally, the reason for that was, is it puts everybody on the same playing field. Rules and conditions can be established for each permit that makes everybody, um, compete or operate in the same manner. A lot of these tour, and I won't do this, because this is probably the first of six more of these, and I won't do this in the future ones, but just to give the context, every, a lot of the, some of the tour companies have operated in this county for probably fifteen years, and at the time, fifteen years ago, they got the proper permits that were needed. Some of the more recent tour companies have just kind of come along and, and quite frankly, began operating without any permits. So we've had an array of permits in the past and various rules that apply to the different tour companies. Um, so this is a, uh, opportunity for the board of commissioners to put everybody on the same playing field. Also means that if new tour companies open up, you'll have a chance to see those applications and either choose to permit or not permit those. So what I'm going to do is, real quickly, I'm going to go through the conditions that will apply to this specific permit and the rest of them. And there's also, of course, findings of fact that are in your case analysis. I'm not going to read those, but we would recommend those to be included in your approval. And the conditions they'll apply, uh, number one is that tour vehicles be labeled with paint markings or decals, decals, a minimum of four inches in size that identify the vehicles. That means when the tour vehicle's up there, if there's decals on the side, residents, policemen, whoever can identify that vehicle and know what tour or what business that vehicle's associated with. Um, in this particular permit for the Wild Horse Fund, there's a condition that says their tours will operate only during their hours of operation of the museum, because this is affiliated with the Wild Horse Museum. Another thing we put in the permit, each permit, is that tours shall comply with Chapter Three, Article Two, Wild Horses. That's an accord of ordinances, and that keeps a separation from vehicles and people from the wild horses. Also included, that tours comply with Chapter Ten, Article Two, Beaches. That governs how folks drive on the beach, which is an important thing in this instance. And then we also included the catch-all that says all other applicable provisions of the Currituck County ordinances, and that tours operate in accordance with all state and federal laws. What that basically means is, to maintain their special use permit, these folks need to operate with all the county, state, and federal laws that exist, which makes sense. Another thing we did specifically for each tour company is calculate parking. We want to make sure adequate parking is available at each of these sites for these tour companies. In the instance, the Wild Horse Museum, they only have one vehicle they're using. They have a museum that's less than a thousand square feet, so they actually have adequate parking, they have one extra space, actually, so they are fine on their parking total. Um, and finally, we, we put a condition that the SUP is valid for one year from date of approval. What that means is, we issue these permits and give folks one year, um, to operate, and then they got to come back before you, and I guess we can ensure at that point they've complied with all the rules and regulations. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Oh, I almost forgot, I'm sorry. Two more conditions I need to go over, and these aren't written in your staff report, but these come out of a planning board meeting, um, last week, and I would like to suggest that the board include these conditions into the use permit, and I'll read through these. All tours must be guided from Memorial Day to Labor Day. Tag-along tours are permitted as long as if lead vehicle is operated by an employee of the tour company, and subsequent vehicles are under the employee's supervision. What that basically says is that between Memorial Day and Labor Day, all the horse tours have to be guided. There has to be an employee that is with that tour. Doesn't have to be in the same vehicle, but, for example, if three vehicles go out, one of those needs to have a horse tour employee in the vehicle. That prevents the rental of these Jeeps independently, where they can kind of go up there and go where they want to. That was the condition recommended by the planning board. The other condition would be that vehicles held in reserve in the event of inclement weather or breakdowns may be used as long as the parking requirements and all other conditions of the permit are met. Reserve vehicles must be stored in an approved location. What that means, and this is from the tour companies and the planning board agreed, is that they have a lot of breakdowns in these vehicles, because folks, you know, there's sand, there's water. And what that says is they can have reserved vehicles that can be used to replace ones that are in the shop. But we're still looking for, for example, in the Wild Horse Fund, if they're running one vehicle, that's what the permit applies to. They may have a reserve, but they shouldn't be running both vehicles at the same time. And I, as staff, we would also recommend the inclusion of those conditions into each permit. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I'd like to ask Mr. Woody if you considered, uh, I think everything you've done is great. You've surely covered a lot of bases, Ben, but, uh, would you not consider doing the renewal administratively, notify the board two months before the permit, uh, is to expire, and then handle it administratively so that we don't get caught up in all the paperwork and, and six to twelve permits come back to the board every year? And, I mean, we've, we've done other things like that, handled administratively, and I think this is one of those things that, once we approve it the first time, that, that administratively, the county manager's office and your office, uh, us simply submit that to the board, that would sure be an easier way and less taxing on staff, too.
That, that would be fine with me, and what we can do if the board wants to do that is within, say, ten months, we can prepare a report to submit to you on each tour company and just keep you, keep you abreast of the situation, because the fact of the matter is, if they violate the permit, you can revoke it at any time.
Correct.
Yeah, as long as they're operating in compliance, there's no need of them to continue to come up here. If you've got a problem with them, then you bring it back.
That's, that's fine with staff.
Yeah, I would suggest, just maybe a slight modification, i- if we don't, we have no complaints during that year that it can be administratively approved, but if it is an operator that does have complaints that are logged, that they come in front of you.
I think that's reasonable. Well, I can call up and say, hey, I don't like them, that's a complaint. I mean, if it's a...
A documented, substantiated complaint.
Yeah, because, I mean, we don't want just somebody to say, hey, I don't like these people, and make a complaint and try to hassle them for that. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one signed up. Mr. McCowen, do you have anything to add to it?
Uh, I don't think so.
Hearing, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for their recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of PBO nine thirty-seven with the findings of fact and the staff recommendations as presented with the change that I noted, that we take the county manager's suggestions of the wording involving the administrative approval of the renewal, and that you advise the board, uh, in ten months, uh, whether the renewal application is satisfactory.
I have a motion from Mr. Nel, second from Commissioner Etheridge. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Item five, public hearing in action, PBO nine dash oh-three, Wild Horse Adventure Tours, request for an amended special use permit for outdoor tour operator. The property is located at six hundred Currituck Club Drive, Corolla, Tax Map one twenty-six, parcel three D, Papa Branch Township. Once again, this is a special use permit. Anyone that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to, the permit needs to come and be sworn at this time. Seeing none, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to be quick on this. I am going to be quick on this, actually. This is effectively the same thing I just presented to you in staff, and I don't know if the attorney's okay with this, but I'm going to shortcut this and say, we would actually recommend the same conditions on this one as we did on the previous, uh, report, which were included in your case analysis, and include the two I read into the record last time. Is that okay, Mr. Attorney?
Certainly, and they have the record in front of them.
Okay.
With your rec, with your staff's recommendation, the recommendations of the planning board.
And with that, I would say, the one thing I want, I want to point out with this one, and I feel like I need to do this in each one of these, is the parking situation. In this instance, um, this is at the Currituck Club. I'll put up an arrow photograph, the, the corner of Ocean Trail and Currituck Clubhouse Drive, it's where there's a Wings in that shopping center and the Harris Teeter kind of across the way. Same conditions would apply. One thing I'll say is, in this one, they have ten vehicles, so they do have more vehicles. And they have eight employees, and what that does is, those ten vehicles and eight employees bring the required parking up to seventeen spaces. When you add that in with the rest of the uses in that building, um, that building with, with Wild Horse Adventure Tours has a requirement of sixty-six spaces, and they actually, um, provide exactly sixty-six spaces. So with this, with this permit in place, that building or that operation has no more room to add any more vehicles. So at this point, ten vehicles is the most they can have, uh, provided the parking situation. Other than that, everything else is, is the same, uh, the same conditions, and they're included in the staff report.
All right, anyone have any questions of Mr. Woody?
This includes the, uh, the recommendations of the planning staff.
Yes, sir, and the planning board as well.
Or planning board, excuse me.
And Mr. Nel's recommendation. Hearing no questions, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one signed up to speak. I will now close the public hearing and ask the board for a recommendation.
Recommend to approve, uh, PBO nine dash oh-three with findings of fact, findings of fact, staff recommendations as presented, and also with the caveat, Mr. Nel's put on last one.
I have a motion from Commissioner Idlet. Second from Commissioner Taylor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Item six, consideration of Corrova Beach Volunteer Fire Department to purchase land. Mr. Scanlon?
Mr. Chairman, we were recently noticed from the, uh, Corrova Beach Volunteer Fire Department, for some time now, they have identified, uh, the need to, sometime in the future, to develop a substation in their, in their service area, uh, and they have been systematically putting some money away annually to, uh, fund a reserve for land acquisition. At this time, they have identified a parcel down in the Swan Beach area, uh, that they would like to bring forward for the board's consideration. Uh, the price, the, the parcel was on the market recently for three hundred thousand dollars. We've got it assessed value at a hundred and sixty-five, um, and they actually were able to negotiate a contract for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for roughly a five-acre piece of property. They have acquired approximately half of the funds necessary to purchase this, they're about sixty thousand dollars short. So, it, part of the, the, the purchase contract was contingent upon this board approving the contract. So tonight, Corrova Beach is asking for the board's support, number one, to acquire the property, and number two, they're asking if the board would be, would consider a low to no interest loan of the sixty thousand for them, uh, to be paid back, paid back over probably the next five or six years as part of their annual budget appropriation. And I believe Chief Van is here in the audience if you have direct questions for them, uh, but that is the question that's in front of you tonight.
All right. Mr. Van, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
No, sir, I think that was certainly in the picture. We would like to take that first step, uh, toward getting proper fire protection up in the Swan Beach area, the hundred and sixty-some homes that are up there that we do cover, but unfortunately, the insurance companies don't recognize that, so we'd like to take that first step.
Okay, any commissioners have questions?
I have one. Mr. Van, have you got an appraisal of the property?
Pardon?
Do you have an appraisal of the property?
We have not had an appraisal on it, you know, based on what, uh, you just heard. It was on the market for three hundred thousand for some period of time. It did drop, went back on at a hundred and sixty-five. We made an offer of a hundred and fifty, and they accepted that. No, they answered directly, we have not had an appraisal made of it. We have looked over the property, and it more than meets our needs as, as a fire department.
Mr. Scanlon, what'd you say the tax assessed value is?
A hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and forty-two.
And that appraisal's six years old?
Uh, yes.
Would you, would you be adverse to getting an appraisal first, sir? I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I personally don't want to get into a situation where we're spending county funds to buy property that we don't have an appraisal and hasn't been surveyed. That's the only problem I have with it, and the appraisal is six years old, and we just, we just met in the retreat with a person that owns property up that way, and he said his property was worth fifty cents on the dollar, which is about, I guess, what the realtor's telling you, this is worth now.
I understand. No, I'm certainly not opposed to it. We are in somewhat of a timeline problem with the contract we're, we're holding right now, but we could certainly ask for that and also apply for an extension if, if that's necessary.
How much time would it take to have an appraisal done, Mr. Scanlon?
I don't imagine they're real busy right now.
Yeah, it's... I have no feel myself as to what it would take.
And can I, can I interject, an independent appraisal?
Yes, sir.
About to sell it.
I, I would hope with this of our right now, seven to ten days.
And how much time do we have, Bill?
I, I think the date, and if you don't mind, I think it was the twenty-fourth that we either have to apply for an extension or, uh, close on this property.
I imagine they'll give you an extension pretty easy right now.
That may be the case, you know, and I'm not opposed to going back and, and asking for that, because we did do the contract, uh, contingent upon your approval, as, as we thought we had to, of course.
I'll do an approval with contingent upon, of, of an independent appraisal.
There, to take care of his problem, wait a minute.
Yes, and I'm sorry, I don't see that here right now, but I'm pretty sure it was the twenty-fourth.
I, I think we might have that covered for you. Mr. Van, I think Mr. Nel's got a solution for you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I, I would be willing to make a motion for approval contingent upon an independent appraisal, uh, for the, for the price of the, the sale price.
Okay.
And that, that would allow him to move forward, so we need a second?
Second.
Okay, and discussion? That'll allow you to have a contingent approval and get the appraisal?
And then move forward at that point.
And, and just so everyone knows now, this is not like the county's, he's taking about ninety thousand dollars out of his operating funds to put towards his property. The county would be loaning him sixty thousand to meet the hundred and fifty, and it would be contingent upon him repaying the county that sixty thousand dollars over, uh, what do we say, a six-year period at, uh, ten thousand dollars per year.
It's certainly your discretion, whatever you want to include in your motion.
The, the last I saw was twelve thousand per year, but it's ten, whatever you, whatever you...
Twelve for five years, I think.
Twelve, twelve, five years is a little bit proper, yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, it will be jointly titled to the, uh, citizens of the county, or it will be...
Title to the citizens of the county, and then we lease it back to the, uh, fire department for their use.
Just a point, when we talk about money, we're talking about the citizens' taxpayer dollars, all of it. Whether we give it from here and put it there, take it there, or whatever we do, this is our citizens' money that we owe them.
Certainly, but he, he has the opportunity to spend that money on other things and still contribute.
Correct, correct. I just wanted to make, make it clear.
Any other considerations? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Item seven, thank you, Mr. Van.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Consideration of Amendment to Parks and Recreation Ordinance, Article Three, Section Ten, Dash one thirty-four, to allow dogs at the Rural Center. Mr. McCray?
I'll tell that. As a little background, about a year and a half ago, the board amended the, um, the ordinance relative to parks in the county to allow for special events like bark in the park that Animal Lovers Assistance League has sponsored in the past. Opportunities for dogs to be allowed in parks for those special occasions. The Rural Center, however, is planning now to have a, among its programs, a dog agility area, and also be a, a more dog-friendly, uh, type of park facility, so it's necessary for you to consider this ordinance amendment tonight to allow for that. This ordinance, then, will allow for dogs to come into the park, uh, Gavert Lane, under the Rural Center now, uh, under certain conditions. Those conditions are set forth in ten dash one thirty-four B of the already existing ordinance, which are seven conditions that someone would have to meet if their dog came in under a special event.
All right, any questions for Mr. McCray? Hearing none, do we have a motion? A motion from Commissioner Etheridge, second from Commissioner Gregory. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign.
I will remind the board, this will come back to you for a second reading. Of course, an ordinance must be adopted unanimously by all members of the board at its first reading, and with Commissioner Roar's absence, we'll put it on your next agenda for consideration.
Okay. Item eight is appointment to library board.
Did you get the application? I had an appointment, but I asked the individual to supply the, the necessary documentation so that we had it in writing, and the clerk has just advised me, she has not gotten it, so I would ask the chair to table this until the next meeting.
Okay, we will continue that to the next meeting. Item nine is consent agenda. Motion for approval, Commissioner Etheridge, second from Commissioner Taylor. Motion for approval, Commissioner Etheridge, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Item 10, commissioners report. Ms. Taylor, I think you had something to report tonight.
Yeah, I want to be brief, but it's really important. I've talked to, I've had phone calls over the past probably year or better. I get them especially now when the road conditions are what they are. I took some pictures today of Putten Ridge Road. When Eric and Mike and I met with the North Carolina Department of Transportation back last summer, they said that they would not redo Putten Ridge Road until 2012. I'm asking the board, this is not the whole road, this is just parts of it as we drove down it today. But I would ask that we send a letter requesting that North Carolina Department of Transportation do something about these. A gentleman I talked to today, he said, is that, that's a street sign, lovely, that afraid of, because we do have a lot of people walking up and down Putten Ridge Road, especially kids.
Narrow road, too.
Yes, and to hit one of those potholes and go throwing you off the road would be very dangerous for anybody walking on it. But I think it's the last picture will show you the upgrade that they did, or was it the first picture? Was it the first picture, Ben?
I don't see any upgrades yet.
Well, there's a portion of it that was upgraded not too long ago, and it's held stable. All these holes that you saw there are recent patches that they did. It's cold, it's rainy, there it is, right there. See, now that's held up right well. But that's the only section of that whole road that has been done. So, I'm just requesting. There's traffic going back to Blackwater, there's a lot of traffic on that road.
You're requesting the board send a letter to DOT asking them to come address this road.
Please.
Is that road on DOT's list to be moved?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is Putten Ridge Road.
And it's already on the list?
It's on the list for 2012.
I think the story of the road is next year. Do you need to be moved up?
Well, I'll tell you what they'll do, though, is they're going to send back and say, if you want to move this one ahead of one that's ahead of it, so...
I want them to just address these potholes and the conditions to that road to make it safe for people to drive up and down.
Well, without objection, Mr. Scanlon, could you send a letter?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the county?
Yes, sir.
I will tell you, I've had discussions, what they're doing right now in the cold weather, the king poor asphalt, they've got this little stuff in a bag and they take the shovel and bust it open and it lasts for about two or three weeks.
Four days.
Yeah, or two or three days, and hopefully, when they get some warmer weather, they'll be able to pothole them. But I'll, I'll, I'll tell you, they, they prioritize a pothole sometimes of which ones are the worst because of lack of funds for, for fixing the roads like they need to be.
The ones that's got holes just to the ground are the ones that they're focusing on. Broken pavement is their focus.
Yeah, I mean, right there in front of the high school, in front of our library, going in there to the junior high, I mean, that's, you could set up a front-end shop right there and, and stay busy, just the line of cars, so...
And they stopped repaving December 15th. I don't know the date they start back, but that's when they do stop.
Well, we need to send that letter forward. We will do that. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'd suggest they bring the crew up from downtown Riceville.
That took them two tries.
Mr. Nelmes, do you have anything tonight?
No, I'm just sure, I wish everybody to have Debbie Roar in your prayers. I'm sorry that she's ill, and all of us need to remember her in our thoughts and our prayers.
Absolutely. Mr. Gregory?
Yes, I do. I did get an email this week, the shred action machine is going to be in the county tomorrow. It occurs at County Senior Citizens on February 16th at 1:30. So, with all this losing people's identity and this sort of thing, if you've got a bunch of papers that you want shredded, important, bring them by the senior citizens tomorrow at 1:30 and they'll shred them up for you. And I have another thing for the sheriff, you know, we, we lost, we've lost two highway patrolmen in the last couple of months, and we're down to three now. We, we are allotted six highway patrolmen for this area in Currituck County. And, you know, when, when we lose these highway patrolmen, the sheriff has to pick it up. Our debt has to have to pick up the slack. And I guess what we need to do, Dan, is get a letter off to the Colonel now. Maybe if we get a letter off to the Colonel now, requesting those other, we, we're down to 50 percent. If we can get the other three, maybe by spring, if we send a letter now. But it's the same situation we run in several years ago, you know, when we had to get, same thing, we were losing all of them, and, and you won't get them unless, unless you send these letters up.
You're right, and it needs to go to Mark Bassnight and Bill Owens, too.
It needs to go to Mark and Bill, because we need them down here, especially with spring coming on.
Can you take care of that?
Yes, sir. I just, just quote, the, the two we lost, but they, they got promoted.
Yeah, they got promoted, transferred.
They got promoted and moved up, that's, that's why they're no longer here.
Well, we just need the slots filled.
Yes.
All right, Mr. Etheridge? Mr. Idlet? I have nothing either. Mr. Scanlon?
Nothing, my turn.
All right. With that, I'd ask that we adjourn the commissioners' meeting and reconvene as a tourism development authority. Is that your motion? I have a motion from Mr. Etheridge, second from Commissioner Gregory. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign. Mr. Scanlon?
You've, you've got one item. The Tourism Development Authority generally deals with expenditure of oxy tax. We have a budget amendment we would like for, a request and for approval tonight. It is associated with this public service radio system that we're looking to install. We have purchased the equipment and I guess it was oversight on our part, we didn't realize that the installation of the pole was not part of the, the package that's purchased. It's our responsibility to get a pole installed, force power, telephone, and the various different things to go make that system. So, you have a budget amendment tonight and your agenda package tonight to have that pole and power and telephone, again, installed to the location.
I have a motion for approval. Motion for approval from Commissioner Nelmes, second from Commissioner Taylor. Any discussion?